This is our Boston City Council meeting before I ask the clerk to take the role. I just kind of want to set the stage here. We're doing things a little differently. The Boston City Council is officially closed. I closed it on Monday, but it's important that our work continue. So we're going to do our meetings and our hearings virtually using technology. We've had a few difficulties today with our first time doing this. This is our first time doing this, so please be patient with us. But it's important that the work continue. So half of us are here in the chamber and half of us are participating through a platform called Zoom. We want to make sure that the work of the city council continues. So with that being said, I'm going to ask our clerk to please call the role. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Baker. Counselor Bach. Counselor Braden. Counselor Campbell. Counselor Edwards. Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flynn. Counselor Janey.
Present.
Counselor Mejia. Counselor O'Malley. And Counselor Wu. We have a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. I have been informed by the clerk that we have a quorum. At this time, and this is the only time, I'm going to ask my colleagues to please rise. We will open up our meeting with prayer, which is our tradition, and with reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. God of creation whom we try again and again to make into our own image, enable us to desire rightly to be of use in the service of others. Be with this Boston City Council in its work. Grant them the wisdom to create what is essential for the common good. Keep them within each of their hearts a love for the cause of human welfare and a dedication to enrich the lives of all people. Guide them in their labor to maintain and strengthen our public lives and remind them to be good stewards of the gift of life. Amen.
Amen.
Agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Clerk. Thank you all. We will not be having special presentations at this time, so we will move right into our agenda. The first order of business is the approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last meeting will stand as approved. Seeing and hearing no objections, the minutes are so approved. We'll now move on to communications from His Honor, the Mayor. Madam Clerk, if we could take docket 0479 through 0482, we'll read them together.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0479, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $250,000 in the form of a grant for the FY20 Community Policing Airmac awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund community policing activity programs. Docket number 0480, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $140,000 in the form of a grant for the FY20 and FY21 Safe and Successful Youth Initiative awarded by the Massachusetts Executive Office of Health and Human Services to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund a comprehensive inter-agency strategy that connects--
Did anyone else just lose audio? All I can see right now are those of us who are remote.
Madam Clerk, could you please continue?
Okay.
We'll work on that, Counselor.
All right.
Yeah, I think when you have that many accounts in close proximity, it created that awful canyon sort of echo effect and--
Thank you, Counselor. Carrie is working on that right now. Thank you.
The grant will fund a comprehensive inter-agency strategy that connects law enforcement, employment, education, public health, and youth development agencies to reduce youth violence in the Commonwealth. This additional funding increases the total grant to $2,300,000 over two years. Docket number 0481, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $50,000 in the form of a grant for the FY20 First Responder Naloxone Administration Grant from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund the purchase of naloxone and related supplies to be used by the Boston Police Department. Docket number 0482, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant in the amount of $15,600 in the form of a grant from the Drug Stewardship Program awarded by the Medication, Education, and Disposal Project to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund the collection of disposable and expired and unwanted household medicines.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell, are you able to join us remotely? You have the floor.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam President. As Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice-- Oh, shoot. In passage-- Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. In passage of dockets 0479 through 0482, quickly, docket 0479 is a $250,000 grant that I along with Rep. Adrian Madaro and the Speaker of the House and other members of the Boston delegation advocated for. It is new funding to the Boston Police Department for B Cuts, and those are officers that will walk our commercial districts. And this allows more officers to be present on the ground more consistently in our business districts and, of course, doing it in alignment with community policing. It's a line item that was restored at the state level, so it's a huge win for the city of Boston. I just want to personally thank Rep. Adrian Madaro for his advocacy and partnership with this. And obviously, we want to get this money to the department as soon as possible because it has to be spent within short order by the end of the fiscal year. Docket 0480 is a Safe and Successful Youth Initiative. We've received this funding in the past. And given that we are dealing, obviously, with coronavirus, we want to make sure that these grants and dollars get to the department as soon as possible so that the various departments can continue granting monies to our organizations who are doing work on the ground to respond to incidents of violence and other concerns in that area. The next docket, docket 0481, very straightforward and self-explanatory, and it's $50,000. And it's for our first responders dealing with the opioid crisis, and it will fund the purchase of naloxone and related supplies for the Police Department. And lastly, docket 0482, also straightforward, a relatively small amount, $15,600. It is a grant from the Drug Stewardship Program, and it will be used by the Police Department to fund the collection of expired and unwanted household medicines, also part of the strategy to deal with the opioid crisis. As Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seek suspension of the rules for all four dockets. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0479. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0479 has been passed. Counselor Campbell seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0480.
Can't hear you.
All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0480 has been passed. Counselor Campbell seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0481. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0481 has been passed. Counselor Campbell seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0482. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0482 has been passed.
Just a phone on, online, lost the audio. Help me.
Yep. And so as that is happening, know that Carrie is in the chat and working on it. So just alert him quietly, you know, as best you can, and he is working on it. Okay. Is the sound back on for those watching virtually? Wonderful. Thank you so much. Now we will move on in the agenda to matters recently heard for possible action. There was a docket here, 0458. This-- Madam Clerk, if you could read that docket?
Docket 0458, note of order for hearing to discuss the city of Boston's preparedness and the risk of contracting coronavirus COVID-19.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, since this hearing was rescheduled for Monday, this coming Monday, March 23rd at 1:00, docket 0458 will remain in the Committee of Public Health. Now we will move on to motions, orders, and resolutions. I've been informed by the clerk that docket 0483 has been withdrawn, so we will move on to docket 0484. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0484 actually has a typo. There is a C in the original docket. There was F-I-S-C-H-E-R, and so we will be having everyone receive the corrected Fisher, which is F-I-S-H-E-R. And it reads, "Docket 0484, Counselor Bach offered the following resolution, designating a plaque at the intersection of Parker Street and Fisher Avenue in Mission Hill in honor of Corporal John Alfred Moreau."
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Bach. Counselor Bach, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, this is a resolution to place a plaque of remembrance for John Alfred Moreau. He was born in 1949, grew up in Mission Hill, was active in Little League and Mission High School, and in 1969 ended up enlisted in the Army and on January 1970 went to Vietnam and two weeks later was killed in the line of duty. This is someone who goes away 50 years, is still remembered in the Mission Hill neighborhood, and this plaque will sit at the corner of Fisher Avenue and Parker Street, which is where the Bull Finch Playground, the He Grub Plank Finkout games in was located. I think it's important to note today, you know, this is somebody who at age 21 made the ultimate sacrifice for our country, and I think just in a moment like now, remembering that we're all being asked to make sacrifices. Sometimes those sacrifices are just staying at home right now, but they're so important, and they're important for the lives of everyone else. And I just want to note that, you know, if John Alfred Moreau hadn't survived Vietnam, he would be a 71-year-old Vietnam veteran now and in the category of people who we think about when we think about the most vulnerable during this public health emergency. So I'm glad that we're able to do this for him and his family in Mission Hill neighborhood and just would remind everyone of the need to call upon a serial sacrifice today. So I move for suspension of the rules and passage of docket 484. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Is anyone else looking to speak on this docket? Thank you. Is anyone looking to add their name by a show of hands? Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Braden, Counselor Baker, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Wu. Please add the Chair. Please add Counselor Campbell, Counselor O'Malley, and also the Chair. I believe that is all of us. Did I miss anyone? Counselor Baker, I mentioned Counselor Baker. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Counselor Bach seeks suspension of the rules. God bless you. An adoption of docket 0484. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0484 has been adopted. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0485?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0485, Counselor Asabi George offered the following resolution in response to the DESI District Review Report on the Boston Public Schools.
Thank you so much. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Asabi George.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to also add you, Council President Janey, as an original co-sponsor.
Thank you. Seeing and hearing no objections, I've been added.
This resolution is in response to the DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education District Review of the Boston Public Schools. Last week, they released their findings, which don't at this time recommend any state intervention or take any state takeover of any of our Boston Public Schools, but has identified a number of schools that they're expecting some significant improvements to, and which we understand we need to make sure that our schools have the resources to perform for our kids and to support our students. There is an MOU that's part of this recommendation that has some significant-- has created some significant concern, so this resolution here is in response to that report and in support of the work happening through our superintendent's strategic plan and the work that continues every single day in our school communities. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Counselor Asabi George. I'll reserve my comment, only just to say that I appreciate your leadership and all of my colleagues, particularly now, given what we're going through with the coronavirus pandemic. So thank you. I will call upon additional speakers. Anyone else looking to speak on this resolution? I'm checking in the room, checking in the chat room. Okay, wonderful. Anyone looking to add their name to this resolution? Oh, thank you so much. We're going to hear from Counselor Campbell. The Chair recognizes Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counselor Asabi George, for just flagging not only the MOU but also the report. Was extremely disappointed that such an important report and MOU would be released on a Friday news dump day and frankly, in the midst of the coronavirus. So absolutely look forward to further conversations with respect to the support and the MOU and going into the weeds because it is critical and very important as we proceed to close, of course, achievement gaps, opportunity gaps, serve our English language learners, especially these students even better, do drastic things with respect to our high schools. So I just wanted to put that on record and add my name. Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Counselor Campbell. Is anyone else looking to speak on the matter? Okay. Anyone looking to add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Bach, and please also add Counselor Braden, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Baker. I see you, Counselor Baker. Counselor Wu. Did I miss anyone? And Counselor Campbell. She-- yes, she said that when she spoke. Thank you. And obviously, the Chair is already on it. Thank you. Counselors Asabi George and Counselor Janey seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0485. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0485 has been adopted. We'll now move on to personnel orders. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0486?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0486, Counselor Janey for Counselor Braden.
Counselor Braden seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0486. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0486 has been passed. Madam Clerk?
Docket 0487, Counselor Janey for Counselor Campbell.
Thank you. Counselor Campbell seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0487. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0487 has passed. We're now moving on to late files. We don't have any today, and that's really good. Anyone wishing to remove an item from the green sheets? Okay, wonderful. I've been informed by the clerk that there's nothing to add to the consent agenda. So at this time, we'll just adopt the consent agenda as is. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, nay. The consent agenda is adopted. We're going to move on to announcements. Bear with us. I know there are folks online. I'm going to go to the online folks first because oftentimes, when you're not in the room, you have a disadvantage. Any of my colleagues who are tuning in, would you like to make any announcements? Okay. The Chair recognizes Counselor Matt O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam President. Just very briefly, this is, as we all know, this, the enormity of what we are going through is unlike anything we've ever had to deal with and likely will ever have to deal with. But I know I speak for all of us when I say the response of the people of Boston has been remarkable and unsurprising. I put out a call on social media the other day asking for folks who are able to help as well as to identify folks looking for help. And probably nine out of 10 responses, and we got dozens and dozens of them, people looking to help in any way. I know you're all hearing that from your constituents, and I know that you're all doing that. So I don't have anything profound or different or update to suggest other than I'm proud of each and every one of you, and proud of all the people of Boston, and I know that we will get through this together, and Godspeed, everybody.
Other announcements. The Chair recognizes Counselor Asabi George.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to take this opportunity to thank all of our school staff and school communities who've really come together to support our kids in this very unusual time. I know many teachers are learning new ways to communicate and instruct their students, and I just want to give them props. Now having my boys at home during what should be school days has created a very different rhythm for us as a family, and I just really want to, in advance, thank our teachers across our district and our school personnel and our mental health providers and our guidance counselors for doing the work that they are planning to do today while they're, I think, reconnecting in our school buildings across the district and in the coming weeks ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I also want to highlight the tremendous work our first responders and our dedicated city employees are doing during this national crisis. I see them in our schools, I see them on the streets. They're cleaning our sidewalks, they're giving out food, they're patrolling our streets, they're putting out fires. They're really the unsung heroes of our city. I was with the superintendent of schools this morning at the Condon School, and she was really doing an excellent job talking to the people that were giving out food for our elderly, for our children. It is people like our dedicated city workers that really helped move Boston forward. I also seen a lot of young people getting more involved, taking this very serious. It is a national emergency. You know, during World War II, our country mobilized to make sure that we fought. In World War II, there was a city councilor that sat in these same seats who left at age 16. He lied his age to fight for our country, who was Joe Mocley. But it's that same spirit of togetherness that we need in our country, and it's making sure that our elderly are protected, our persons with disabilities have the resources they need, our immigrant community is treated with respect as well, and our veterans, of course, as Counselor Bach effectively highlighted. I also hear a lot of negative comments, Madam President, from the White House, unfortunately, calling this a Chinese virus. This is a worldwide epidemic, and it's impacting every person, it's impacting every country. But to scapegoat a certain ethnic group is racist and discrimination. During this time, we must come together as a city, as a country, to make sure we treat everybody with dignity, respect, and empathy, especially our immigrant neighbors. That's when they need us the most, is making sure that they're treated fairly. In Boston, we've always done that. We've always supported our immigrant neighbors, and that's what we'll continue to do, and we'll continue to advocate for dignity for our immigrant neighbors in our city and in our country. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Mejia.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. So I want to echo the same sentiments as Counselor Asabi George.
Is your mute on? Mute your laptop?
I have no idea. I think I just even hung up. I messed up everything. I don't know what's going on here. Okay. It's-- the mute is on. I don't know if I am-- No, we're good? Okay, sorry. I'm always the drama queen, everybody here. But I wanted to echo Counselor Asabi George's comments in terms of our--
You're good. Go ahead. Keep going.
I'm not on.
Okay. We're going to take a pause. The Chair-- Okay. So technical difficulty, please be patient with us.
Okay, sorry, everybody.
Counselor Mejia, please continue. Thank you.
Yes, so wanted to just echo Counselor Asabi George's comments in regards to the educators. What I'm realizing as a working mom is homeschooling is something that is really traumatic, and we think that we know it all, and it's not until we're at home trying to teach our kids while we're working that we realize that our teachers are doing a really great job at educating our students. So I've been telling my daughter to Google everything. But in the light of these situations, I really think that this is an opportunity for parents to recognize the immense work that our educators do every day to educate our children. I also want to highlight and uplift the voices of those who are undocumented at this time who are struggling, many of which are restaurant workers who, you know, are working under the table, and we know that's happening, and now because work is no longer available to them are feeling the crunch. And as a city, I'm really looking forward to figuring out how we can support those who are most vulnerable, particularly are undocumented. And there are folks out in the city of Boston right now who are looking to us to lead with a collaborative spirit and recognizing that no matter how bad this is, we need to remind ourselves that there is something good in this. And how we come out of this is really going to set the tone in the way that we work here in the city of Boston. So I look forward to joining you all in this journey and hoping that everyone who's tuning in recognizes how important you are in this process. Thank you for all of your hard work, Madam President, in pulling this together.
Thank you so much. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Lydia Edwards. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair... Madam President, excuse me. I just wanted to echo everyone's comments about our wonderful staff. I think the heart of Boston is the strongest it's ever been, and it's demonstrating to us... It's demonstrating to us that we, as a city, not only do we rise to the occasion, but we rise for each other. I'm very proud of Boston. I just wanted to note, this Saturday is a drop that we're going to do. It's a historic drop for every single household, and we need people to sign up. I believe we're looking for 1,000 people to help out with this drop citywide, and we'll be retweeting on all of our accounts. There's a Google Doc to sign up to make sure we have organized volunteers so that we don't have a large, massive group, but I wanted to let people know, it's... We need the volunteers. So, very excited to be part of that.
Thank you so much, Counselor Edwards. The Chair recognizes Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Arroyo, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to echo my colleagues and the gratitude that they've expressed to our frontline nurses and first responders, our teachers. But I'd also like to lift up those that often go unseen, our janitorial, our custodial staffs, folks who are really doing double duty, our retailers, our grocers, the folks who are really stocking these shelves. And I ask that folks, and I recognize that these are tense times and frustrating times, I ask that folks take some time to make sure that they express their gratitude to them in person when they're in the stores, that they recognize that we'll make it through this together, and that we show kindness to one another as we navigate these uncertain times. And so I appreciate you. Together, we'll make it through this. Thank you to all those folks who are working for far less than they deserve, to do very essential services for the City of Boston and for the residents of the state. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor Arroyo. I want to check in one more time to see if others want to make announcements. Anyone who is participating virtually, looking to make an announcement?
Liz.
Liz. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I had the sad duty this morning to attend a funeral of a neighbor, an elder, an immigrant, who, 93-year-old woman, originally from Ireland. It struck me that it's a very lonely place to be in this crisis when family and friends and neighbors can't come to say goodbye. And I really encourage everyone, getting a little teary-eyed about this, if there's an bereavement in the neighborhood or your community, please reach out to people. You don't have to physically go and hug them, even though that's your inclination, but check in by telephone, see if they need any assistance, and just let them know that you're thinking about them. It's striking that in this time, when we're under so much stress, that that innate impulse to go and be with people, we can't do that right now. There's other ways to connect and reach out and support people. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor Braden. Let me just say how deeply grateful I am for all of... To all of my colleagues, the administration here, but especially our neighbors and residents across the City of Boston. People are really stepping up. This is a serious issue, a serious crisis we're in. Thank you, Counselor Edwards, for highlighting the drop that we're doing this weekend on Saturday to make sure we're getting information out to every single resident within the City of Boston. This is... These are times we have not seen before, and I know it can be scary, but please know, you have folks who are fighting hard to make sure that we get the resources that we need. We're going to take a big economic hit in our city with our small businesses and entrepreneurs, so it's important that we continue to advocate and to continue to lift up those who have been left behind. The Council will continue to do its work, even if we're not physically here in City Hall. Today, we are, but this is probably the last day that many of us will be here. Please know that you can reach out to any one of us on the Council for support, and please be kind to each other. So, with that, let's continue to move on. At this time, I would ask that all members and guests, please rise. There are no guests, but please rise. We're going to adjourn today's meeting by lifting up everyone who's being impacted by this, but we also have some individuals that I want to highlight from my colleagues. So, for Counselor Campbell, Alan Robert Jordan. For Counselor Edwards, Antoinette Penny LaFrasia. For Counselor Flynn, Christopher Bubba Koska. The Chair moves that when we adjourn today's meeting, we do so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. We are scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, March 25th, at 12:00 noon. That meeting will be virtual. There will be no one here in the chamber. We will do the entire meeting virtually. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the Council is adjourned. We did it.